I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified Board of Education to order. There's one closed session item on tonight's agenda, student readmission in four cases. Education Code Section 48918F. We do not have any speaker cards on closed session agenda items. We will now move into closed session and we'll return to open session at 6:30 PM. I call the meeting of the San Juan Unified Board of Education back to order. The meeting is being audio and video recorded and the recording may capture sounds and images of those attending this meeting. The recording will be posted on the district's website. Board meetings are being held in person in the boardroom at the district office and the community is welcome to attend. The meeting may also be viewed on the district's YouTube channel where it's being live streamed. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. I'm Zima Creason, Board President. To my left is Ms. Pam Costa, Board Vice President. To her left is Mr. Saul Hernandez, Board Clerk. And to his left is Mr. Ben Avi, Ms. Paula Viesquez, and Ms. Tanya Kretcheck, Board Members. To my right is Superintendent Melissa Bassinelli. And to her right is Board Administrative Assistant Stephanie Cunningham. Individuals who are attending this meeting in person and would like to offer a public comment, we ask that you complete a speaker request card available at the staff table and you will be called upon at the appropriate time in the agenda. Please note that Board Bylaw 9323 limits visitor comments to two minutes per speaker with no more than 30 minutes per single topic. Time will be extended for any speaker who uses an interpreter. Please note that public comments, including your name, become part of the public record. We are now at Item D, Approval of the Minutes. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Mr. Avi?
Thank you. Under Board Reports, Item J, I would like to strike the words "took part in" and replace them with "held at." So it would read, "Ben, Mr. Avi reported on the community meeting that he held at Bella Vista High School last week."
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes for June 27th as amended?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Kretcheck and seconded by Mr. Avi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry. I am very, very sorry. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Any abstentions?
Abstaining because I was-
Can you turn on your mic?
I'm abstaining because I was absent.
One more time, it's not on.
I am abstaining for the third time because I was absent.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. And so the motion passes 5-0 with one abstention. We do not have any reports from staff. So we are now at Item E2, Board Appointed District Committee. Tonight, we have one report. We will hear from the Chair of the Bond Oversight Committee, Tim Slate.
Good evening, esteemed Board Members. Nice to see you all. Press the what?
There's a button.
See the red light?
Yep.
Oh, it's working.
It's already working. Hello, hello. Just gotta lean closer to it, right? Okay, my name is Tim Slate. I would like to present to you the Bond Oversight Committee's annual report. In accordance with the Education Code Section 15278B, San Juan Unified School District Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee, or otherwise known as BOC, provides an oversight to the district regarding the appropriate and legal use of Proposition 39 bond dollars. The BOC normally consists of at least seven members, including PTA, parent, senior, business taxpayer representatives, and community members at large. It is intended to inform the public regarding the expenditures of Measure J, Measure N, and Measure P bonds. Based on when they were approved, these three bonds represent over a billion dollars of bond principal that the district taxpayers will be paying off for decades. It is crucial that the BOC members be diligent in providing oversight. The committee meets roughly quarterly to review projects and costs and annually to review independent financial and performance audits of these bond dollars. This annual review will cover roughly the 2022 and 2023 fiscal year, with most time being spent on the 2022 summer construction season and review of the Bond Oversight Committee meetings held during the last year. The majority facilities projects completed for this year's school year include John Barrett Middle School, Star King K-8 TK Kinder Classroom, Casa Robla High School, tennis courts, and Mariloma High School tennis courts and hardscape. Construction continues with Earl Leggett Elementary School, Arcade Middle School New Campus, and Katherine Johnson Middle School New Campus. The Bond Oversight Committee had the opportunity to visit John Barrett Middle School, Casa Robla High School Student Union, and Del Campo High School Science CTE this year. Bond financing. The district has continued to employ a modified hybrid pay-as-you-go process. Hello? It keeps cutting out. To fund many of its school projects, this has allowed the district to save over $150 million in interest costs. By limiting bond sales and repaying debt quickly after a year or two, the interest rates are at least 50% less than if the bonds were sold and paid off over a typical five-to-30-year period. Bond Oversight Committee meetings. The Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee has met three times this last year, on September 20th, 2022, March 16th, 2023, and May 18th of 2023. Beyond routine construction updates, the most substantial agenda item discussed at these three meetings was the annual release of the financial and performance audits covering the 2021 through 2022 fiscal year. Performance and financial audits. Gilbert CPAs conducted the performance audit review and found the district in compliance regarding the expenditure of bond dollars under Measures J, N, and P. The internal controls of the district are sound and total expenditures matched audited financial statements. The bond funds were spent appropriately on construction and modernization of school buildings and not on staff salaries and administration costs unrelated to the bond itself. The financial audit, also done by Gilbert CPAs, shows no irregularities. During its 60-year history, San Juan Unified has only placed four facility bonds before voters. The district prioritizes campus modernization based on age of buildings and student enrollment figures using its facility's master plan. Conclusion. There are various ways to analyze the effectiveness of state and local bonds, but three criteria stand out. Number one, the projects funded by the bond need to last the length of it so students continue to benefit while parents pay off the interest. Two, the projects funded should benefit the majority of the students at the school. Three, and finally, the projects funded should be prioritized based on age and amount of district fund routine maintenance done on each campus. San Juan Unified fully meets these criteria and continues to modernize efficiently. Thank you very much for letting me give your report. And are there any questions?
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the Board? Ms. Viesquez?
Just to say thank you for your time and to the members of the committee's time as well. I've had the benefit of joining for some of the meetings and I know it's important work that takes time out of evenings with family, et cetera. So thank you for being part of the work and also thank you for the report.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you. I also want to appreciate you giving the report. More so, I would like the way, appreciate that you brought out the manner in which financially we are prudent as a district by paying off those bonds quicker and refinancing when we do. We, I think you said $150 million in interest savings, is that what you said? And that's a direct savings to our community. So I appreciate you bringing that out and I think that's what makes our bond program so different the way other districts pay their bonds back throughout the state. And so I appreciate that and it's a great savings to our community. So thank you very much.
It's, you have a really good facilities team and Mr. Camardo runs it pretty well, so, yeah.
That's awesome. Any other comments, questions from the Board? Always appreciate seeing you, appreciate your volunteerism. I know this is not your first, second, maybe not even your third rodeo. And I know you've served, you know, it's been a minute. And Mr. Slate is a dad and has a job and does all the things. We're really lucky to live in a community that has supported so many bond dollars. That's why we're able to improve our very, very old district, that's 75 square miles, with schools that are very, very old. And you have, you and the team have done an amazing job making sure that we're in compliance and doing the right thing by the voters. So appreciate you very much and thank you for the report.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
We do not have any reports from employee organizations or other district committees. So we are at Item E5, Closed Session Expulsion Actions. Mr. Hernandez?
The Board voted unanimously to accept for denied readmissions in case numbers RA01, RA02, RA03, and RA04.
Thank you. We are at Item F, Visitor Comments. We do have speaker cards for general visitor comment. Comments are limited to two minutes. The clock on the screen counts down the time. Under the Ralph M. Brown Act, the Board is not allowed to comment on items that are not on the agenda. So we're not ignoring your comments. We just can't respond to any individual comments. The Superintendent can refer items to staff who can follow up with you. Ms. Wright, please facilitate public comment.
Of course. As test? Handhold mic. As test? Test, test. All right, first, we have Mr. Afzal Rashid, followed by Ramona Landeros. You can make your way to the board.
Good afternoon and thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. I understand that, you know, the schools have a very difficult time, specifically with the immigrant population coming from various countries. My name is Afzal Rashid. I'm the chairman of a nonprofit organization called Immigrant Integration and Empowerment. Recently, I've encountered, I volunteer with San Juan School District for a number of different things. And I have noticed that overall in Sacramento County, there's about 4,000 students that drop out. And so with the new immigrant population in the county and also San Juan School District having a very large population of these immigrants, I've seen signs of failing students, Afghan students, and other minorities that could become a problem from the school, for the school, and also for, overall for the county. As you know, 60 to 70% of the prison population usually are people who drop out from school. So I think that I want to see if you will put this on your next agenda, if there are programs that are successful where while you keep students in school, but also have components of tutoring, mentoring, and maybe vocational training. I know of one such program that's called Miracle University. I don't, I hope you guys will consider that. I know that the school has some programs, structured programs, but from what I've seen from my experience, they're not working well. And I think San Juan School District has a large number of these students. So hopefully that will be on your next agenda. Thank you so much for your time.
Next, we have Ramona Landeros, followed by Dr. Kadir Raja.
Good afternoon, Board President and Trustees. I'm, okay, we have a, first, I wanted to give a shout out to your facility team. Good work on that. I was a former Board Member for Twin Rivers and so I understand facilities, I understand programs, I understand from that side as well. I don't know if this is working, is it okay? Okay. Gracias a todos los que vinieron aquí y todos los miembros de la asociación Benito Juárez. I'm also the founder of Benito Juárez Foundation. We are a group of advocates in the community and we were recently awarded by Attorney General Banta for our civil rights work in the community. One of our concerns is the amount of Latinos that are graduating, that are dropping out of school in the community, especially at schools where you have predominantly a large population. I know San Juan definitely has them, but pretty much all of Sacramento. And so I came earlier and I did hand out a packet with a brochure explaining some of what I'm here to advocate for. I'm here to advocate for our community and to say that if there's a problem with some of our failing students, we also have a solution. As advocates, as parents, we want to see our children also graduating from high school. We shouldn't have to determine what school you go to by whether you're going to succeed or not. I want you to also consider the families on the other side of Wad Avenue and not just on one side of Wad Avenue. Some of the work that we have done is we're also working with the immigrant population because we know that there's a lot of immigrants in Sacramento. And so we want to be that voice for them. We want to work with you. We want, we understand the teacher burnout when you have students that you can't serve. And so adopting a program such as Miracle University will give you the opportunity and the teachers, the wellness that they deserve, to work together with the community. It's very culturally responsive, it's culturally relevant. And we ask that we be given some support on this. I know that 80% of the students that are dropping out are Latino, okay, in the district. And so we feel that this is a big concern because what happens when you have a student who's dropped out of school? That translates into prison, problems, crimes in the community, teenage, early pregnancy, the list goes on and on. I don't have to tell you what some of the problems that come with failing students, with students that are dropping out of school. So we do a lot of work with, like, you know, community in all districts. And San Juan is no different than North Sacramento. And with SAC City Unified, we do have other districts that are seriously and looking at this program as a real opportunity to do better by our students. We also have, I believe, well, Dr. Raja, who actually is a founder of this program, I've seen his work. He was our California Teacher of the Year for Twin Rivers Unified. Done amazing work. I've followed his career for the last 20 years. I have a lot of trust that this can work in every district. And I think we are reaching a crisis level where we now need to be looking at other programs that are culturally responsive that will work for our community. So I'm just here to tell you that I'm, we're with you. We want to be able to support this community, support the district, support the teachers, because they deserve it. So thank you again for your time. Gracias a todos. Thank you.
Frank Sabetevak. Oh, I have a microphone.
Go ahead and start. All right, good afternoon, good evening, San Juan Board of Education. My name is Dr. Kadir Raja and I'm just, I really appreciate you for this time. I'm here to give appreciation and thank the San Juan Board of Education, actually, because as Ms. Ramona Landeros had just said, I am the founder of Miracle University Dropout Prevention Program and our mission is to end the dropout crisis in the county of Sacramento where we have 4,000 dropouts every single year scattered throughout the districts in the county of Sacramento. But I'm here to thank you because I am a graduate of San Juan District. I myself graduated from Rio Americano High School. I started as a student who was failing until middle school, when I had the right mentor, the right teachers, the right support system. And then that led me to be a teacher, a principal, California State Teacher of the Year. And now our mission, our calling is to end the dropout crisis in the county of Sacramento. And we all got to stick together and it's possible. Our formula is to surround every child with a village, a miracle village, that's based on culturally responsive mentoring, the right type of tutoring, and a personalized internship for every single child that is labeled as a failure. Every child with six Fs on a report card. Every child with three months of missing school. Every child who has to attend a SAB hearing. Every child who's forgotten and impossible to solve. We know we can transform every potential dropout. We have 20 years of transforming thousands of students with six Fs. Ankle monitor, continuation school, juvenile hall, and transforming them into scholars and productive citizens. And so this is not, this is about all of us together. Our Afghan community, our Latino community, Black community, White community, all of us together, because we have a crisis that is solvable. And we know that there are a couple hundred dropouts every year in San Juan Unified, just like all of our districts together in the county. And we just look forward to partnering and working together to identify those kids at the high school level that are at risk of dropping out so we may serve them better. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Frank Sabetevak, followed by Carolyn Ballas.
Good evening, Board. Appreciate you giving me a couple minutes to speak here. My name's Frank Sabetevak. I am here with my wife Shawna and we are parents of a recent Rio Americano graduate. And our son is entering Rio Americano as a freshman this year. We have two main concerns that we would like to raise or continue to raise awareness for. The first is across the district and that is the absence of athletic trainers on site for really all athletic activities. You know, there have been strides in getting EMTs and volunteer trainers on site for games, but practices and other, excuse me, practices and other activities are equally as dangerous and risky. Why it's not a higher priority in the budget really baffles me. I've moved all over the state in my adult life and this is the only district that I've lived in that doesn't support a full-time athletic trainer. I think it warrants further discussion. There are several parents here that we are representing that are very concerned for their student athletes. The second thing I wanted to discuss and also raise awareness for was the fact that Rio Americano High School doesn't have a football field that is conducive to hosting home games. There are no stadium facilities, no lights for Friday night games. Obviously, the last several years have been very challenging in many regards to the quality of the high school experience for really all of our children. You're cutting me off already. I'll close on this. I'll kind of shorten my comments. The 2014 Master Facilities Plan called out facilities for Rio Americano High School to have-
I hate to cut you off, but your time did expire and so the folks on YouTube can't hear. So I'm going to have to ask you to conclude your comments.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Carolyn Ballas, followed by Jessie Smith.
Good evening, President, Members of the Board. My name is Carolyn Ballas and I am a proud parent of a Rio Americano sophomore student who's also a football player. And I have two concerns that I want to bring to you. One is, of course, the need for a certified athletic trainer. I know in the last meeting, Chase Carrillo spoke with you about his accident that he had, the injury he had on the field, and how he laid there for 30 to 40 minutes before an ambulance arrived and how there were no medical staff, any trained staff on the field. And I can assure you that that did happen because I was in the stands along with my parents, cringing. So please consider putting that on an agenda for a future board meeting. I would appreciate that. In addition, I also wanted to talk about the need for the lights and stands. Not only do I have my son who's a sophomore, who's a football player, but he was also recently accepted into the Medical Pathways Program there at Rio. And my daughter will be going to Rio next year as a freshman. And she does three different sports, along with being track and field is one of them. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is the whole point in which we picked the location where we purchased our home in Aron Park. We looked at the entire Rio Americano boundary for the school and we wanted to make sure that we could be within those boundaries because we really felt that Rio was a supreme school to go to. So with that said, please consider as well bringing lights and bleachers and we'd be willing to work with residents in the area.
All right, next, we have Jessie Smith, followed by Cherie Hayes.
Hi, everyone. My name is, my name is Jessie Smith. I'm a graduate of Pacific High through the Miracle Program. I would like to share a little bit of my backstory. I'm the first black male, I'm the first black male in my family to graduate. I'm the first black male to graduate in my family. The Miracle Program helped me so much with inspiration, tutoring, providing, transportation. When my car broke down and even times when I felt like giving up. Dr. Raja came to my house pushing, pushing me to not give up. Without the Miracle Program, I can tell you I would not have graduated. When I share my testimony with generations before me, they say they wish the Miracle Program was around when they were growing up. And that's why I believe the Miracle Program should be in all the schools in San Juan District to give students like me a fighting chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cherie Hayes, followed by Gabe Johannison.
Good evening, Board Members. My name is Cherie Hayes. I'm here with a group of parents of children at OVO K-8 School. We're voicing our opinion until we get confirmation that Michael Ryan Wells, one of our science teachers, will not be returning to Orangeville Open permanently.
Yeah.
Let them clear.
I just don't want to lose my time.
You'll get your time back, don't worry. It's possible. We appreciate everyone joining, but we ask that you exit quietly just because we have quite a few other public comments and we want to give them the opportunity as well. Thank you. All right, let's start again.
We are here tonight to cover all bases regarding the unprofessional and detrimental conduct of Michael Ryan Wells, a seventh and eighth grade science teacher at Orangeville Open Elementary. Due to the confidential nature of a recent investigation into the claims you will hear tonight, we have not received adequate confirmation from anyone in the district that Michael Ryan Wells will not be returning to our school. We have learned that he will not start the school year with our children and that we will have a long-term guest teacher. However, that is not enough. Until we receive a clear confirmation that he will not be returning, we must be diligent and continue to advocate for our children. Our families are concerned not only about his behavior, but also with retaliation against our children and themselves for speaking up and sharing these incidents with us. Based upon the teacher's conduct thus far, it's not difficult to make this inference. We've emailed and received confirmation from Stephanie Cunningham that the school board has been provided several PDFs containing 33 pages of documentation regarding allegations from several families. Since the outcome of the investigation has been very ambiguous, we are here to ensure that all of the issues are brought to the attention of as many people in leadership positions as possible. Tonight, you will hear from brave students who have been subjected to the unprofessionalism of Michael Ryan Wells. You will also hear from several, several Orangeville Open family members of associated seventh and eighth grade students who are taking turns to convey our group message to you.
Next, we have Gabe Johannison, followed by Charlotte Wilkie.
Hello, my name is Gabe Johannison and I'm here to talk about Ryan Michael Wells. The things that Ryan has said to me are completely unacceptable. One thing I told one of my other teachers is that if you're told you're worthless or stupid enough times by someone, especially someone with more power, you will eventually start to believe it. He said things like, "I'm grateful I only have to spend an hour a day with you" and "feel bad for others that spend more." He's accused me of being on drugs and he's told me on multiple occasions that I don't get enough attention at home. These things hurt more than a punch or a kick because it's his job to care for me and keep me safe. And he has completely failed to do so. After I told my teacher that, that she said, after I told my teacher that, she said that she knows I'm strong enough to ignore it. But that's not true because I'm not. I'm a kid. I shouldn't be dealing with someone like this. This man has single-handedly put me into depression for most of last year. I would have panic attacks because of the things he's said to me. And I know that every teenager ever has had twerks in little moments, but what he has caused is much more. He made me feel powerless and alone even though I knew there were others with me. He made me think I was stupid and I started thinking if I tried in my other classes, I would fail anyways, which got me terrible grades. Towards the end of the school year, I didn't care about anything. This includes relationships with anyone but my closest friends, my family, in my family. My grades, and it made me very self-conscious. And even after not talking with him for months, I still have problems. I'm losing relationships with people I care about and I'm not trying to stop it. I'm more focused at this point on having fun and hanging out with my friends that I don't care about things that are actually important to me, where I feel like my education doesn't matter. When I found out he was returning next year, my heart dropped because at the rate things were going last year, if he's still there- Because at the rate things were going last year, if he's still there, I'm either going to go into a deep depression or my grades are going to be even worse than they were last year.
Next, we have Charlotte Wilkie, followed by Michelle Maddox.
Hello, my name is Charlotte Wilkie, and I'm going into eighth grade at OVO this year. There are many things that Ryan Wells, or Brian, Michael Wells, said that didn't make sense or aren't really okay. First are the quotes. He said, "This class is full of [BLEEP] and, you know, I will allow you to to say [BLEEP] as many times as you want in this class. You are teens, so show it." If you were shocked that I just said curse words, trust me that I felt the same thing, that I felt the same way when he said that in front of the whole class. In addition to that, in addition to that, from where I sat in his room, I can hear him saying to one of the kids, "You are so fucking lazy, and it seems like you put no fucking effort into any of this." To the same kid, he also ripped out their earbuds without warning for no reason at all and didn't say anything after. In addition to that, in addition to him being my science teacher, he was also my sixth period, or in other words, my elective teacher. And while in his class, he held all of us in, inside his classroom more than five times in one semester after, after the bell rang, making me ten minutes late for my ride. It lasted so long that some parents were knocking on the door to ask him to let their kids out, but he wouldn't even move. We have no idea why he did this. When I told him I had ADHD, I had also asked him if he could explain certain terms in an easier way. But instead, he made the terms more complex and didn't explain any of them in a way that I can understand. And I felt he was doing this on purpose. For a little while, he was flirting with one of my friends in my class, but towards the end of the year, he started acting really weird around me. But no matter how many times I asked him to stop, he didn't. He also complimented our butts and made us more uncomfortable than before. I have never been so scared of any teacher in my life. He made me feel beyond uncomfortable. I've always been scared to write anything related to this down in my notebook and fear that he would yell at me and confiscate it. Being in this class last year was the worst thing I've experienced in my life, and I really don't want myself or anybody else to go through it. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Michelle Maddox, followed by Kristin Peterson.
We are here because we live in a society that is riddled with less and less human connection and contact. Ryan being allowed to continue in the school setting and humiliate students on an ongoing basis is horrifying. With less and less human elements in our society, it makes the few connections that remain very sacred. Everything needs to be done to ensure that his position of power over students does not continue to be abused and lead to more detrimental health, mental health ramifications for our children. Many of these accounts that you're going to hear this evening show his direct non-compliance with the following professional standards of teaching. Section BP 4119.21. Number four, engaging in inappropriate socialization or fraternization with students or soliciting, encouraging, and maintaining an inappropriate written, verbal, or physical relationship with a student. Number six, using profane, obscene, and abusive language against students, parents, or guardians. And number ten, divulging confidential information about students. Here are some of the specific allegations that we have evidence of in our documentation that you've been provided. He was out of compliance with federal guidelines regarding students who have 504 plans in place with the district. Instead of supporting these students with 504 plans, as they have a legal right to be treated, he ridiculed them openly, and as you heard from Charlotte, called them all kinds of names regarding them being lazy in front of others. I'm going to stop there.
Next, we have Kristin Peterson, followed by Jessica Johannessen.
I'm just going to continue. He repeatedly kicked students out of his classroom due to his lack of classroom management skills and left them to sit or wander the halls for up to forty-five minutes. These students were left outside the classroom unsupervised. The classroom door was locked and the curtains were drawn. In the event of a school lockdown, these students were left vulnerable and would have been left to fend for themselves in this day and age, this complete negligence for student safety and district protocols. He was also late coming to school, leaving students standing outside his classroom unsupervised, citing his long commute as the reason. He repeatedly used foul language out loud in front of students, the S-word, the F-word, and hell. He also told students he didn't care if they cursed in his classroom. We apologize for repeating these words in this public forum. However, our children should never have heard them numerous times from a teacher. On several occasions, he spoke in a lewd manner around students. He was witnessed having an erection during class. He openly accused students of being on drugs and talked about students' personal ADHD medications. This is a direct breach of HIPAA laws. There are several accounts of him telling students they are lazy, cowards, and talking to them in condescending tones. In several meetings, he would gaslight students in front of parents. He had very unconventional grading behavior, forcing students to redo assignments before giving them any grade. He ignored student and parent email inquiries regarding grading protocols far beyond the district response time guidelines. His erratic grading methodology was psychologically cruel and unusual punishment for many students. Students have permanent final science grades on their records of Fs and Ds.
Next, we have Jessica Johannessen, followed by Kelly Greeley.
Restart that sentence?
Students have permanent final science grades on their records of F and D, assigned arbitrarily and without proof in Google Classroom to support grading decisions. In some cases, what he has done will follow our kids into adulthood. What message are the powers that be within the district sending our kids? We are here because we do not want him to comp- compound our children's trauma by returning him to our school. We do not want him to have the opportunity to harm incoming seventh grade students. Making our children have the same inept teacher again would be cruel and unusual punishment. We are advocating for our children because they need to know that they matter and that they have a right to feel safe and comfortable at school. Several students have spoken to staff on site regarding their concerns. We are teaching our children that they have a voice and that they need to speak up when something is wrong. We are hoping that the outcome of this entire process will help ensure our children have learned a very valuable life lesson. That is, when you know something is wrong, you speak up, gather evidence, and make sure that your voice is heard. And if you are persistent, eventually, one of the powers that be will realize an injustice has been made and do the human thing and rectify it. We are here to inform you, the school board, so that you can do your due diligence to the students of this district and ensure that this teacher will not be allowed to return to the classroom, any classroom, in my opinion. Until we have received confirmation that he will not return to the classroom, we will continue to be advocates for our children and their rights. Thank you for hearing us. Sincerely concerned parents, students, and parents of Orangeville Open Elementary.
Next, we have Kelly Greeley, followed by Julia Valdez.
Okay, all right.
All right, we have a few passes, so we're going to move forward with Makila Fetzer.
Good evening, Superintendent Bassinelli, President Creason, members of the board, members of the district, and members of the community. My name is Makila Fetzer, and I am a parent in the San Juan Unified School District. And I want to bring to the forefront of your mind some things that are happening in the district that are of great concern to me, that have affected me personally, my children. In that, one of the things that I think about as a school district, one of its primary functions is the safety and wellness of children. We've heard an extreme example here just before speaking about that safety needing to be addressed. What I'm bringing to you tonight, I'd like to draw a slightly different story. I'd like to have you consider for a moment our athletes in our district. My son was just recently cleared after yet another injury where he had to have a cast on his arm, be taken away from athletics. And this injury could have been prevented had there been an athletic trainer there at the field, part of practice, helping with the conditioning, the pre, if you will, medical services that need to happen. So in that, I'd like to draw this comparison. A sister district here south, the Sacramento City Unified School District, has made a commitment a few years back, made a commitment to have every comprehensive high school have over eight hundred hours of athletic training services. These schools, in combination with their athletic director and their principal, determine how that time is used. They attend the practices of most sports, all home games, and in the case of football, they also attend the away games, with the understanding that football is a injury-prone sport in comparison to others. My understanding is, in this particular school district, another time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ureida Rivera-Patino, followed by Cajawn Howard.
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Ureida y soy de Honduras.
Good evening. My name is Ureida Rivera-Patino. I'm from Honduras.
I'm sorry, can you speak into the microphone so our viewers can link in here too?
Yes. Her name is Ureida Rivera-Patino, and she's from Honduras.
Este año, este año me gradué en Highlands High School.
This year, Ureida graduated from Highlands High School.
Y estoy muy agradecida con la Universidad de Milagro.
I'm thankful to Miracle University.
Porque ellos hacen que creas en ti mismo para lograr tus sueños.
Because they make sure you believe in yourself so you can accomplish any of your dreams.
Yo era una de las muchos estudiantes que estaba perdiendo el año.
I was one of those students that was lost in school this year, last year.
Hasta que esta universidad me contactó y me ayudó.
Until the Miracle University contacted me and helped me out.
Espero que cada uno de los estudiantes que está fracasando.
I hope that every single student that is failing in high school.
Pueda tener la oportunidad de estar en un programa como estos.
That every failing high school student may have the opportunity to be in the Miracle University program.
Ya que lo que te hacen es apoyarte y ayudarte.
They will support and motivate the child, the student.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Cajawn Howard, followed by Vicky Grins. Next, Vicky Grins, followed by Jaylen Poltruck.
Thank you, and thank you for your service to our community. I'm Vicky Grins. I'm a parent who's been a volunteer with our schools for many years. My oldest graduated from Rio in 2009, and my youngest is graduating in 2024. And since that time, we have been advocating for athletic services at Rio, including lights on the fields and, and also for athletic trainers. The trainers are essential to well-being, to look after health needs, to prevent injuries from worsening and to address needs that arise in a moment. And that's open to, that would be addressing youth in all sports, not just football. But as importantly, I want to remind you that having a safe place to belong and a safe place to gather is an essential protective factor, which helps youth to become resilient. And those skills of resiliency will stay with them through their life, impacting their long-term health and well-being. So I would encourage you to take stock of this and to invest in our children's well-being by investing in the trainer and also the lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jaylen Poltruck.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Jayla Renee. I'm eighteen years old, and I'm excited to be here today. Before the Miracle University Program, I was failing ditching school and definitely not on track to graduate. I was facing a lot of struggles and was heading down a not-so-good path. I even had many breakdowns because I thought I wasn't going to make it. Once my counselor introduced me to Dr. Roger, I wasn't, I was interested, but I wasn't convinced. So it was hard for Dr. Roger to get a hold of me, but sometimes, I mean, he was persistent. So it made me slowly accept the fact he was trying to help me. My future plan is to get a good job and travel the world and share with loved ones. I hope to also write about my struggles one day and to, or to help other people who may have this, who may have struggled the same as me or who are currently struggling, to show them that there's other people and they are not alone. The Miracle University Program. I would recommend the Miracle University Program to parents and teens who want to take the next step to turn theirselves around. Without the Miracle University, I wouldn't have been a high school graduate. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and that was our final public comment.
Thank you, everyone, for your comments. We are at Item G Consent Calendar. Do any board members wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve Items G1 through G8?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Hernandez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Viescas. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. We are at Item I1, San Juan Education Foundation. Ms. Allen?
Good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli. Tonight, we're pleased to present an update report on the operation of the San Juan Education Foundation. As you know, the foundation is an independent organization with the primary mission of supporting our students in schools and classrooms and really helping us form that connection. So they not only go out and raise funds that help do that, but they also go out and build relationships that help us do that. So tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Colleen Caldweller. She has been the executive director of the foundation since July of 2021 and has really made a big difference in how we organize and the effectiveness we've had. So with that, I'll turn it over to Colleen.
Why, thank you. Good evening, President Creason, esteemed board members, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. Created to raise funds for San Juan Unified, the San Juan Education Foundation is the only nonprofit in our region that would cease to exist if we were not serving San Juan. Our work is your work. As Trent said, my name is Colleen Caldweller. I am the executive director of the San Juan Education Foundation and a very happy member of the family and community engagement team. Tonight, I'm going to share some impacts in 2023 and give you a sneak peek to what we're going to do in this new school year. We are incredibly fortunate to have a diverse, stellar board of directors. Each of them have their own special connection to the district, be it as a current or former parent, an alum, a past staff member, or a service provider. As all boards do, our board oversees our fiscal and policy pieces, but they do so much more than that. They also help us evaluate all our grant applications, secure donations, and act as ambassadors to our community. Our board members serve two-year terms and can serve three consecutive terms. We're always looking for new board members, as wonderful as this one right here.
My name is Brian McCrell. I've been on the board actually for about twelve years, and so my two-year term has gone on for quite a while. But I'm a- But I'm a real estate professional here, and I've got a couple other board members with me as well. A little bit more into education, but Vera Vaccaro, who was a former president at Del Campo High School for a long, long time, and Dr. McKibben, who was on the board with you guys for quite a while. So we're pretty happy to have him. Oh, we've already, we've got Johnny back there. Is that, how are you doing? Perfect. I had no idea he was in the room, so I blew that, but great to see you. Sherry's here as well. Well, we got a bigger turnout than we thought, so happy that they're all here, but thank you guys so much for coming tonight.
Since raising money is our work, that's one of the most important things our board members do for us. But of course, we like giving money out the best. We distribute money through our direct-to-teacher grant and scholarship programs. Oops, sorry. Since two thousand and six, the San Juan Education Foundation has distributed more than seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars through direct-to-teacher grants, which is pretty impressive for an organization being run by a half-time person for much of that time. This year, we continue our core set of grants, the Learning Experience Star and Project Grants. And so far in twenty-three, we've given out more than thirty-one thousand dollars to forty-five teachers representing thirty-five schools, thirty-four schools, I'm sorry. Last year, during this time, we only supported seventeen schools, so we're pretty proud of that incredible growth. Moreover, we've seen a thirty-seven percent increase in grant applications during the same period, which means we're reaching our community in new and better ways. While we are thrilled to be reaching more students and impacting the lives of all of our teachers, we know that we have much more work to do, and so we're trying to find better ways to do it. This recent year, we started a new process for giving out our money. Teachers are now completing their projects in a much quicker manner because we now distribute money directly to the teachers after they incur their own expenses. We reimburse them within fifteen days, or we incur expenses directly on their behalf. This makes their jobs much easier. It means that we're getting grant fulfillment happening within weeks instead of months, and we see much happier students and happier teachers because of that. In this new school year, we'll be offering a professional learning development opportunity so that we can teach teachers how to submit and complete grant applications in real time. Very excited to see that reach more teachers and hopefully more schools this year. I wish I could tell you about every single project that we funded this year, but we'd be here all night. I know none of us want that. I can tell you that every single project we fund is innovative, responsive, and unable to have been done without the support of the San Juan Education Foundation. This is a snapshot of our most recent grantees. If you want to learn more about them and their projects, you can visit our website at sanjuaneeducationfoundation.org. There are a few of them here tonight. I think if they're still here. Anybody want to stand up that's recently gotten a grant? Thank you, guys, for coming. More of them wanted to come, but you know, back to school and all. Tonight, we've chosen to share with you a project that really made our hearts sing. Erin Gallington, music teacher at Kingswood K through eight, submitted a project to purchase a variety of hand and finger puppets to deepen student engagement in music. His supposition was that by using puppetry in the elementary music classroom, students would have another access point to the subject matter. He suggested that students, that many students have anxiety when they're expected to sing in front of the class, and that allowing them to bond with a puppet could reduce that anxiety level. Let's check it out and see how it's going. See if this works.
What song could we sing to Winston? You'd like to pet him, am I? You know, Winston loves it when people pet him, but he has a rule. If you want to pet Winston.
I don't want to sing for you. It won't be good.
By yourself. Are you brave enough to do that or not? Or for, you are? Well, first, let's sing to him as a class, and then if you want.
That's okay. I can talk it through. No worries. So right now, they're deciding which song to sing. First, Mr. Gallington teaches them about solos. And what has to happen is that if they want to sing a solo, they, and then get to meet and pet Winston, that's the name of that puppet, that they have to stand up by themselves to sing a solo. So first, they sing "To My Lou" as a class. And then you'll see, he's going to ask them who wants to sing a solo, and you'll see many hands going up. This is that moment. He then looks around and he looks for his shyer students. He tries to get one that doesn't have her hand up. She says no, and he moves on to Kaylee. Kaylee begins to sing the same song they were just singing. He asks her to try something else, and she doesn't know what to do. So Winston gives Mr. Gallington some ideas. And then Kaylee sings the ABCs all by herself. I wish you could hear it because it's lovely, and I actually have a lot of these videos, and I've watched them over and over because I love them so much. So way to go, Mr. Gallington. I did want to note, and I'm sorry I went on, but I did want to note that Mr. Gallington was very excited that the puppets are also helping with assessment. So he really didn't think of that outcome when he built this project, but that is what's happening. So imaginary play and puppets increase the fun and trust in his classroom, making for more deeply engaged and happier students. I'm really proud of Mr. Gallington and the work that he's doing. And I'm so glad we could support him. It was just five hundred dollars for that, and that's a huge amount of impact for a very little bit of money. Right? In two thousand and fifteen, the San Juan Education Foundation launched its, launched, sorry, launched our scholarship program. Today, we hold twelve funds in our portfolio equating to forty, two forty awards annually. Ranging in size from five hundred to two thousand dollars per award, all our scholarship programs focus on supporting students planning to pursue post-high-school education. But each fund is unique and crafted around the funder's interests. We're pleased to share that we added three new funds this year equating to five new awards. We're also pretty excited that the Cal Worthington Memorial Fund, which was the first fund we started with back in fifteen, is now offering a scholarship for adult ed learners receiving their diploma or GED and planning to pursue continuing education. We think that's pretty awesome. Our new funds are the Sacramento Women's Chorus Performing Arts Scholarship, which awards one thousand dollars to one female identifying performing artist at El Camino and one at Miraloma. The five hundred dollar Deneau and Associates Public Service Scholarship, which supports a student at Bella Vista wanting to study at ARC and pursue a career in public service. And finally, the Ryan Alvarez Scholarship, funded by a Mesa Verde alum who's not very old, and he wants to really give back. That awards five hundred dollars to two English learner students who immigrated to the US during their schooling. We use a much-improved software application this year, making it much more, much easier for the application process for all the applicants and the evaluators. Students can apply for each program they qualify for with just one common application, reducing the burden on them. This year, one hundred and nineteen students submitted one hundred and seventy-six scholarship applications for programs across our portfolio. However, this represents a year-over-year decrease of thirty-five percent. The reduced number of applications was most notable at Rio, Bella Vista, and Encina. I've spoken with the principals who say they're seeing this trend across scholarship programs. We really want to shift that trend this year. So in two thousand twenty-three, we supported thirty-five students with thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars in scholarships. Here are a few of our scholarship awardees. They had all wanted to be here, but many of them are already at school or getting ready to go. Because of our terrific partnership with the district, which gives us the ability to utilize the district's communication channels and access to staff, the foundation would like to position itself as the primary local scholarship portfolio holder for San Juan Unified. Before we do that, however, we need to ensure that all our students know about our scholarship opportunities. Going into this new year, we plan to work more closely with our counselors, as well as with our avid teachers, making sure our kids know how to find us. We may even have to step into the world of TikTok. We're honored to be the pipeline for the scholarship programs that support the dreams of our future leaders, and thank you for allowing us to do that. So we're planning another great year. Save the date. Jot these, note these dates on your calendar, please. Next week, we'll be announcing the identities of our three Stars Hall of Fame honorees. So look in those email boxes to find out who we'll be honoring at an Evening with the Stars on October sixth at the Mac Powell Center. This year, our emphasis will be in elevating ways in which the San Juan Education Foundation serves this district, and of course, raising more money. Our systems are solidly in place. We have a great team onboard. But we can't do this alone. We need your help. We need our, we need our community's help. You can help us by sharing our story. Our community needs to know and care that we exist. You can help us by helping us to recruit new board members. Do you know someone in our community who wants to serve a great cause, work alongside a terrific team and make a difference? Send them our way. And finally, give. The truth is, raising money is hard, but if we all give a little, it doesn't hurt at all. This year, we'll focus on raising awareness about our workplace giving campaign. We'll continue raising money through events, and we'll be scouring as deeply as we can to bring the money in so we can send it out to our teachers, to our students, for our families. Your work is our work, but we need your help. Please think about the ways in which you can help and let me know. I'm happy to have, take questions, and thank you so much for your time. I did want to mention Carol Pascualen also is here tonight, the Sacramento Women's Choir Chorus, and I'm so glad you also came and support. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we do have one public comment. Ms. Dry, can you please facilitate?
Of course. Carol Pascualen.
Good evening. I'm Carol Pascualen, president of the Sacramento Women's Chorus, and I saw my statement was up there before, so I guess I don't. What I want to add is, we do want to expand our scholarship program to the San Juan Unified School District students, and we wouldn't be able to do it without the Education Foundation. We are a fully volunteer working board and don't have the bandwidth to do all the good research and the choosing and, and all those things. So we really appreciate the Education Foundation, Colleen Caldweller, and her great staff. It was very exciting to present our first scholarships this year, and we hope to expand it next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the board? Ms. Costa.
I just want to say thank you. I think I say it every year, but thank you so much for what you do for the students of San Juan. When I looked at the scholarship page, it was so exciting to see every one of our major comprehensive high schools included with those students receiving scholarships, and it was across all of our schools. And thank you for that. Thank you for making sure that our students receive funds that help them to further their educations and for the projects that you do for our teachers. The things that happen in classrooms because of the work that you're doing does make a difference. And I know it is very time-consuming. Raising money is very time-consuming, but you have done an amazing job. Thanks.
The other, Ms. Krupchak.
I'd like to echo Ms. Costa. Thank you so much. I really appreciated the report and learning about the scholarships in particular. You really piqued my interest. I hope to visit some of the schools and see that in person. If you could, please share that video with us. I'd love to, to hear them. I grew up with music education, so that's close to my heart. And I don't know if you can answer this question, but you mentioned that the teacher with the puppet, he said that the puppets helped with assessment. Just curious where I can find information of how that happened.
That's a great question, and I can't, I can't speak for Mr. Gallington, but I can certainly ask him and let you know. I saw him yesterday. I should have asked him.
I can connect with him. Thank you. Really appreciate it.
Yeah, the comments, questions. It's so lovely to hear from you. I do have a couple of notes. First, I want to bring up a couple of things you didn't bring up. And so I call Colleen one day, "Help me feed these chickens at Greer." So Greer had this wonderful project where the kids got to incubate little chickens, and then the chickens hatch, and they measure the chickens. And there was even this wonderful idea to throw a duck egg in there to freak them out, and I don't know if that part happened. But they needed help with the feed. There's little costs that come from that, right? And so what did I do? I just knew to call, call and say, hey, what can we, can we do anything here? And then immediately, your team got, you got to work, you are the team. You got to work talking with the community over there. A link went out. We were sharing it all over the place. I mean, the responsiveness is next level, just to help fit in and do what you can to help the school communities, and I think that's a big deal. I also want to uplift, pretty early into your time with the foundation, I reached out, you know, and I was, I tried to visit a lot of schools, and I was meeting with some student groups in high schools, and a question kept coming up about fundraising. How do students fundraise? And what do I do? A call, would you be willing to talk to some kids about fundraising? That was towards the end of the year, and the kids were busy, so it didn't come to be, but immediately willing to jump in, you know, in any way that you could be helpful, and I just think it's important to uplift that. There's a lot of great things happening on these slides, a hundred percent, but there's so much going on that maybe no one would have even known, you know, if I didn't bring it up. So I just appreciate you and the foundation, the board, all that you do every single day. And I have one more note, and I don't want to lose it, and my iPad went off. I'm sorry. Help us help you. So I very much would like to spread the message about the great work that you're doing. Ask for fundraising or ask for donations. I know what's helpful for me is just to have ready-to-go messaging that gets sent to an email list, send on social media, because I'm happy to get the word out, because you're absolutely work. Your work is our work, and I would love to be more involved in that way. Superintendent Bassinelli.
Um, I just wanted to express my gratitude to the San Juan Education Foundation. You got a, my on?
Are we on now?
Okay. Um, I wanted to express my, my gratitude to the San Juan Education Foundation. The superintendent student advisory council, each year, they really shepherd the provision of the scholarships that students receive through that. You saw a few of the pictures up on the slide. And our students are so thoughtful in the process. There's a lot of pride that they take when they're making those selections. And seeing the students who have benefited from it too, they are so incredibly grateful. And that work is in partnership with the foundation, and so I'm very grateful for that. In addition, just seeing our teachers out here, and so shout out to all of you showing up on Tuesday night prior to school starting. It's a testament to your gratitude for what this does for you and your classrooms, and so we're very grateful. I'm very appreciative for this partnership. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much for the report. We are at item I two, proposed revisions to Board Policy five zero three zero, Student Wellness. Mr. Kamara.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening, President Creason, members of the board, Superintendent Bassinelli, Ms. Cunningham. Very nice to see you all tonight, the first board meeting. It's been a while. The superintendent is recommending that the board discuss the proposed changes to Board Policy five zero three zero, our student wellness policy. Tonight's item is a discussion item. I have Director Snee Nair here from Food Services to answer any questions that the board might have on the policy revisions.
Thank you so much. Any comments, questions? Mr. Avi.
Thank you. Um, thank you very much for this policy. As a student who lived on roundtable pizza and Taco Bell at both Will Rogers and Del Campo, I think it's good that we're having healthy food in schools. With that being said, I did note a paragraph in here on page four that talks about school, teacher, and parent group-sponsored fundraising activities will only have foods that involve, that meet the nutritional requirements. I was thinking of the back-to-school barbecue I went to last night that had a hot dog and chips and Kona ice. Would that be prohibited? Somewhere, would you be able to sell candy at a snack bar to dance?
So what this refers to is anything that is available on campus and sold during the school day. This policy follows the smart snacks in rules in schools guidelines. So anything that happens thirty minutes after the end of the school day, we're not going to look that way. So anything that's sold thirty minutes after does not comply with what we call the smart snacks in schools.
Okay. Um, I guess if, I would lean towards encouraging compliance with the nutritional standards for student and parent groups. But that's just me. I'll leave it to my colleagues to decide if that's appropriate, but encourage rather than require.
Other comments, questions? Ms. Krupchak.
On page five, it also talks about food that is sold to students that has to be in compliance. And I wonder about the various, also fundraising activities.
And I wonder about the various, also fundraising activities, but like the business school, I think it's called at Mesa Verde, or there are many schools that choose an item that they sell to students during that semester. So all of them have to be in compliance with these new standards?
Yes, if it's sold within the school day, it has to be compliant within the school standards.
And thank you.
Superintendent Bassinelli.
Snee, could you comment a little bit about the federal requirements that are causing, that are requiring us to make these changes in the policy?
So the federal requirements do, which is what we call the smart snacks in schools guidelines, that tell us that everything that is sold to a student will have to meet the requirements for calories, for fat, for all the other nutrients. And that has to be approved through the superintendent or the designee. And that way, we know that whatever we are selling to students, of course, is nutritionally compliant and also does not compete with the foods that we do serve to students in schools as well. So this is a federal requirement. California is stricter than what the federal requirement is asking, which is where we are following California guidelines in, in a little bit of strictness on, on some of the requirements and the calories or what beverages we can actually allow schools to sell during the school day.
Superintendent?
And what are the consequences? Should we not follow those requirements?
So this actually, the, this revision actually came out of a state administrative review that my department had back in 2018. And I'm due for another review this coming year. They had cited that we, our policy was not compliant in some of the language that was in this policy around nutrition. So what I did is looked at the language, made the changes that the state wanted us to make, but also looked at CSBA's policy and, and got some of the language from there to include in this policy to make sure that we, as a district, we're compliant with what the state wanted and also what CSBA had on their recommended policy. So if we are not compliant with this, then once again, we will get written up when we do have a administrative review when it comes to nutrition services. One of the things they do go in actually and also check is what is sold in student stores. If there are, you know, any student stores on campus, the state reviewer will go into the student stores and also check what is being sold and whether it meets the nutritional guidelines or not.
Did you have another comment, Mr. Avi?
No, I was just gonna, just so I could clarify, I think what I'm hearing is state and federal law requires this policy update. It's not a voluntary action of the district. We're simply getting into compliance with state law, and there will be actions against the district if we're not in compliance with state law.
Yes.
Okay. I'll withdraw my recommendation from earlier.
I think you can still eat pizza 30 minutes after.
Ms. Vieskas?
I didn't expect you to give into the rules so quickly, Mr. Avi. I know, I do appreciate the clarification, and maybe this is just an instance where there might be a couple of events where it's better to ask for forgiveness than permission. I mean, I just want to call out, like, a lot of our events do have, especially when I think about cultural events, like selling tamales and selling lumpia and all that. And so I'm just, I'm not going to call out individual events. I appreciate encouraged, but also appreciate us following the rules. Those are my thoughts on the topic.
You are on record. Any other thoughts, questions, comments? It's always a pleasure to see you, Snee. Is there ever a dull moment when you're at the podium? No, appreciate it, and you're not single-handedly taking away all the cupcakes. It's in the record.
No, we are not. We just don't want those cupcakes to come enlaced with anything.
You know, there's, there's things. Yes. No, appreciate the report. This was a discussion item for tonight, and it'll come back for action on August 22nd. Thank you so much. Thank you.
If I might, if it's, if it's the board-
Can't hear you yet, though.
Oh, if I might add, if it's the board, board's purview, can we bring this back on consent unless there is a, unless it has to come back on a business action item?
Everyone okay with consent? Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We are at item I three, Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators. Mr. Thickepin.
It was not me that brought the cupcakes, I promise. Good evening, President Creason, board members, Superintendent Bassinelli, and Ms. Cunningham. I'm here tonight to present the superintendent's recommendation that the governing board approve the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators for the 2324 school year. This is a standard agenda item we typically bring back this time of year to make sure we have all the tools in our tool belts and maximum flexibility that the state gives us to make sure that we have fully qualified educators working with our kids when we open our doors. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, this is an action item. Is there a motion to adopt the Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators, Educators for the 2023, 2024 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Vieskas. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Costa. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, that was unanimous. We are at item I four, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee Election. There is one name on the ballot for the School and Community College District Representative for the Sacramento County Treasurer Oversight Committee. Do any board members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, this is an action item. Is there a motion to cast a vote for Sean Martin for the School and Community District Representative for the Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Avi. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Vieskas. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, that was unanimous. We are at item J, Board Reports. Are there any board reports? Ms. Vieskas?
Just want to say I'm excited for another school year. I want to welcome back the broader community and excited to kick off another school year. Happy New Year.
Mr. Avi?
Did want to say I attended so-called barbecue where hot dogs may or may not have been eaten. No, I have, just as a parent, been to a back to school barbecue for forget. And I also attended part of the Carnegie Orientation for Seventh Graders. And I do appreciate the extra effort that goes into welcoming students before the school day starts, because I do know that requires staff to come back early. It's all voluntary. But it really does make it worthwhile for the students because, I mean, I know my, especially the littles, being able to meet their teacher before the first day was really important. And for my seventh grader, being able to go and like go around campus and kind of see what's going on was important. So I know those were not the only two schools that did that, so I just wanted to say thank you to all of the parents and teachers and schools out there that were welcoming students back in advance of August.
Wonderful. Any other board reports? I echo my colleagues in Welcome Back to School. I need to stop saying, though, how was your summer? Because technically, summer keeps rolling through September, so let's keep holding on tight and take care of ourselves. It's going to be a wonderful school year full of new adventures, and I'm excited to be back. We are at item K, Future Agenda. Do any board members wish to add any future agenda items? Seeing none, we do not need to return to closed session. We are adjourned.